I now call this meeting the Cranston City Council to order. At this time would ask everyone to please turn off their cellphones. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Here, Council President.
Here.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Here.
Present.
Present.
Present. Is there a motion dispensed with the reading of the minutes of the last meeting?
So moved.
Motion made in second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Yes.
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 Counsel President?
Yes, Counsel Monsiello. Hope you to stand your roles. Uh, now is the time. Okay. Um, everybody please stand and join me in 20 minutes. I am the president of the United States of America, and in the Republic of Washington, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let me promote, uh, acknowledgement and commendation, Counsel Monsiello.
Thank you, Counsel President. This time it is my privilege and honor to introduce three Hube Bay students who last quarter achieved seventh grade honors. Would Sean Myrick, Angelica Meschetti, and Andrew Levine, please come forward.
I'm gonna read it to you. The Cranston City Council, be it known to all that the Cranston City Council hereby issues the citation to, and the three of your names on there, of Hube Bay Middle School, in recognition of achieving seventh grade honors. The entire council extends its sincerest congratulations and very best wishes on this memorable occasion, and expresses their hope for your continued success as well as good health and good fortune. Uh, this is City Council and entire City of Cranston, very proud of the three of you for this achievement, and good luck. Counsel President, I know you're big on academics, so I think it's a big achievement, so I want to recognize the three of them.
Entire City Council, congratulations, you guys have done a great job. Keep up the good work. You're an inspiration to the fellow classmates and the kids who come to the high school after graduation. Congratulations again. Our public hearings, any members of the public vote to speak on any item. Please come forth, if you may, address the record. Try to limit your speeches or performance.
Uh, Counsel President, members of the council, my name is John Moltz, I'm here on behalf of the property now group. We're here with regard to the last agenda item under the Communications, both have approval of new London Avenue state property, and if you'd like, we can come back up when that item comes up on the agenda and discuss that with the council. I'm gonna do that all over again? Okay. So if you'd like, we can come up with that agenda item coming up?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else in the public that speaks on any topic? Uh, hearing none. Uh, next is a resolution, the opposition was opposed to act in settlement, we're responsible in the absence of a lot of ownership. Uh, before we vote on this, uh, Counsel Monsiello.
Uh, Counsel President, thank you. I'm gonna have to recuse myself, as I'm a member of one of the locals that's a little getting the case. I've already filled out my form, so I would ask that I be able to recuse myself.
I'm gonna ask the city's, uh, sponsor listed to give us a definition of espousy ethics, uh, concerning, if we vote on a motion or resolution, when they have relatives or relatives in the state or union.
Thank you, Counsel President. I think that there is a rule called the class rule, which is if your relative is not affected in any way other than the rest of the entire class, it does not pose a conflict. However, if you're more comfortable without voting on this, if you have a relative, and relative is very broadly determined, it goes out actually two levels of uncles, aunts, nieces, granddaughters. Uh, so if you're not comfortable with it, I think you would be better off accusing, but I don't see that the Ethics Commission would take a position on it. Normally, if we had had enough time, we could have put an advisory opinion request before the Ethics Commission, but we did not have time to do that. So, I think you're free to vote, but I think if you wanna be in an abundance of caution or cautious, because you're a member of an active union, and I think that there are other members of the council who may have family or relatives or a member of one of the unions in that settlement, like the safer course is to just accuse.
Counsel President, I'll take Plan B, I will recuse myself.
Uh, I also am gonna recuse myself, I have a lot of issues with the union, and I'm not gonna vote on something that would be ineffective in my way of... Counsel President, Torina, please step forward and take the only disclosure.
So we're moving on resolution, so I have a motion to approve.
Uh, is this Counsel President, I mean, is the...
Guess Counsel Monsiello.
Was this resolution put in time to meet the Avakati deadline? It was, so there's no need to have the rule suspended.
Okay. So you need a motion to suspend Rule 34B here tonight? So it doesn't need to...
Okay, I made a motion to suspend Rule 34B.
For a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Counsel, let's go.
I just, I wonder what the rush is and why this should not be referred to committee? I certainly don't understand the pension settlement beyond what was in the newspaper, and I don't feel that's enough to make a decision on it. So I don't, why are we rushing to this rather than sending it to committee?
Counsel Mott? Thank you, Counsel President. Um, to me, I think this is on the forefront, I think, given the fact that these negotiations have been conducted in secrecy, given the fact that the city of Cranston and all the other cities and towns that this proposed settlement is affecting weren't put into the table, we weren't given to voice our opinion how this is gonna affect us, I felt the expedience we are putting in this resolution tonight beyond front of this, to tell the General Assembly, uh, you know, if this has a council feel this way, that we do oppose being left out of the process and oppose the added cost that's gonna come to the great soon, especially in 2016.
Thank you, Counsel Mott. Any further discussion on the motion to suspend the rules?
Counsel Mott?
No.
Counsel Spikels?
No.
Counsel Mott?
Yes.
Counsel Mott?
No.
Counsel Monsiello?
No.
Counsel Henry?
Recuse.
Counsel McRae?
I'm gonna recuse as well.
Counsel McRae?
No.
Motion fails, that I will pay out back to Counsel Southern. Counsel Mott?
I would move to send this resolution to the Finance Committee.
Second half circuit. Any discussion? Where can you take the roll?
Counsel Mott?
Yes.
Counsel Spikels?
Yes.
Counsel Mott?
Yes.
Counsel McRae?
Yes.
Recuse.
Counsel McRae?
I recuse as well. Yes.
Counsel President?
I'm mic socket working, so I don't know if it's a breaker or...
Talk really loud.
We can get rid of it.
None of the vices working? There's no power?
I'm tapped into the system, I'm not getting anything. I was a few minutes ago and then it cut out.
All right, we just have to speak very loud so we can hear us. Reports committees, public works committees, Chairman Monsiello.
Boardance 1-14, uh, an amendment to Title 8, Chapter 12, Section 090, uh, quoted the city of Cranston, health and safety, this item came before the Public Works Committee and approval was recommended.
Is there a motion? We'll move, second. We'll convene in second, any discussion on the motion? Counsel Monsiello.
I just have a couple of questions for Mr. Mason or the administration. Just to go on record and be clear here, um, the resolution is saying that we're saving $200,000, is that correct?
Well, it's not a resolution.
You aren't, I'm sorry.
That was the memo that I, Ken Mason, Director of Public Works, that was the memo that I had attached to that ordinance change, yes, approximately, I think it was $150,000.
Can you explain how we're saving that $150?
Well, the easiest explanation is the labor to collect the garbage and the recycling will essentially be cut in half. The new trucks that will be used, uh, single driver trucks, no labor at the, uh, at the back to manually insert it into the truck.
Mr. President, if you can allow me, I have just a bunch of questions regarding that number, so if the other council members don't, it's okay with them, I just wanna ask a series of three or four questions to follow up on this.
I'll proceed, Chairman Monsiello.
Okay, so it's $150,000 less than what we were paying them in this year's contract, is that correct?
That's correct.
Is there any job lost in this contract?
Well, it's not mandated that there's a job lost, but I'm sure there will be some cuts by waste management because they won't be provided to manage.
Do you know if waste management has done anything to...
Secure them.
...secure jobs? I mean, I know the mayor wants to build 20,000 new jobs in Cranston, with this...
He might have to go to 20,010, but, um, has, have you talked, anybody talked to waste management about what the manpower issues are gonna be?
No, I have not. Waste management has several contracts around the state, New Providence, New York, Borough ville, and several other communities, I think they have openings quite often.
Who paid for the trash barrels? Waste management?
Waste management will be...
Who's gonna issue the trash barrels? Waste management?
Waste management.
So they're gonna keep track of all the serial numbers?
That's correct.
And that we're hiring another person to administer this program, is that correct?
That was a placeholder that I used for budgeting purposes only. That will be buried out in the budget process.
So really, how much is that person gonna cost us?
Well, that's...
With benefits and wages?
Again, I said for budgeting purposes, that would cover $70,000, and I would assume that would include benefits, wages.
So then we would have to subtract that from the 150 we're saving, so we're really only saving $80,000, is that correct?
No, it's not correct.
Okay, well, if you're gonna create a job, the money's gonna come from someplace.
That's $70,000 in his into the new contract. That was in my budgeting purpose. That was the memo that I submitted to the...
So do we have to add that to 150 that we're saving? I don't understand the encounter.
Do you have, do you have the memo that I...
Yeah.
Go to page two. That's the cover contract, and that's the new contract. The new contract includes approximately a budgeted line item of $70,000. If you choose not to sum that, you end up saving $220,000.
And then there'll be another countdown to pick up mattresses and large waste, is that correct? Are we paying for that too?
Same thing.
So if somebody has a mattress that they wanna get rid of, or a big appliance, how is that gonna work?
They will contact, the homeowner or proprietor will contact waste management, send them a pickup schedule, and they will also pay a fee of mattress and faulty waste pickup.
So there's no cost to the city on that?
That's correct.
And the last question I have, if a resident wants an extra barrel, or maybe two extra barrels, it's gonna be $154 for that barrel per year, or is it one time $154?
$150 per year, pro barrel.
Every year?
That's right.
And how are we gonna track that?
They can track it via waste management.
Okay, thank you, Counsel President.
Counsel Monsiello.
Thank you, Counsel President. I wanna follow on that last question Counsel Monsiello had. So hypothetically, um, one of the trash bins gets stolen, misplaced, um, people call in and say the trash bin has been missing, who looks for it, who finds it and brings it back, how does that work? Do we have a trash police or something?
Well, to a certain extent, we're gonna be covered by that, but we're trying to limit, not necessarily eliminate it, but, uh, each of the trash carts are gonna be embossed with the city of Cranston logo on it, so it won't be able to be taken into Walworth or Providence or another community because people will notice that it belongs to the city of Cranston. Also, each, each container is gonna have an RFID tag, digital barcode, and that will be able to tell exactly what address that trash can belongs to. So if there happens to be one down the street that doesn't seem to belong to anybody, or somebody tries to use two trash cans when they really should only have one, we can scan that and make sure we have the correct...
Okay, so you're saying we, the person would call waste management and say that their trash can's missing, or misplaced, or however you wanna put it, or would they call the city?
Um, I think they could be called either or, city or waste.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Corina, Counsel President.
Thank you, Counsel President, through the chair, to the director. So, what about people who own two families, three families, multi-unit houses, are they getting two bins?
The city provides waste pickup for residences from one to four families. So if you have duplex, you're gonna get two trash and two recycling. Triplex will get three of each.
So it's by actual address, not...
It's by actual, it goes by the taxes.
Taxes, okay. And my next question is, alludes to extra barrels, how many, what's the average volume of trash the city of Cranston picks up?
Average volume.
Yeah, the average volume per house. Because now we're capping it at 65 gallons per house per week.
I believe you don't have that figured.
Well, I would assume, since we're capping it at 65 gallons per house per week, that we should probably do the math and find out if it makes sense, because that would say that what we're paying waste management today to pick up the trash, even though we're saving $200,000 in raw cash, if they're doing it per ounce or per gallon, everyone will look at it at a cheaper rate today, then maybe we're not really saving money because they're picking up more trash. And maybe one bin per household doesn't work.
Well, according to all antecedent evidence, it does, where 65 gallon trash should work for a typical family of all.
But we don't know if that's true or not, and we're expecting the taxpayers, who it's not true for, to pay an extra $150 a year on top of their taxes.
That's correct. Counsel Mott?
Thank you, Counsel President.
Do we know what size trash containers Walworth uses?
Walworth uses 96 gallon trash and 65 gallon.
And how is, how did we arrive at the 66 gallon or 65 gallon barrels? Was that suggested by waste management? Um, was that a cost decision? In other words, what would the difference been if we decided to go with a larger barrel?
It was actually recommended by Resource Recovery to go with the 65 gallon trash and the 65 gallon recycling as the most cost-effective way to come up with the mandated 35% recycling rate. It forces you to maximize your recycling.
Okay, the recycling part I get, it's more of the trash side of things, I'm having a hard time grasping. Um, the other question I have is, why waste management? If we have a barrel, and I'm speaking in my own experience, I purchased a 90-some-odd gallon barrel from Lowe's that has the flip lid, it's actually very similar to what they use in Walworth. Why waste management can't pick up those barrels if they're compatible with automated removal? Because, I'll be honest, I'll be upset that I purchased that barrel for close to $100 and it can't be used, and just driving around the neighborhood and seeing the amount of barrels that are similar to what I have, and given the fact that people have bought two, one for recycling, that they mark recycling, and one for trash, uh, I think we're gonna have some people that might be a little hot on their collar saying that we can't use those barrels anymore. And I'm just wondering, is that waste management saying they can't do it because their equipment's gonna be incompatible with those barrels, or they just do not wanna do that?
No, the contract that we signed with waste management specifically states that they will pick up the provided barrels.
Only?
Only. Now, as far as using your 96 or any of the other barrels that are out there, all you would have to do, if you wanna use them for yard waste, you can use them for yard waste.
That's a lot of yard waste, but, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Counsel Spikels?
Could you explain what happens if we don't increase our recycling rate? Well, the state has a mandate for 35% recycling. There is no, there's technically no, um, penalty if you don't make that. However, what this resource recovery does have is, there is a cap on the amount of trash a community can send to Resource Recovery at the $32 a ton rate that all communities have. The cap in Cranston is 25,000 tons per year. If you go over the 25,000 tons per year, your rate goes up to $54 per ton. Um, in the, in the recent years, we have not gone over that, but we have in the past, and you end up paying the $54 rate. So in effect, they're, they're trying to get you to recycle more. There's no penalty if you don't.
Counsel President, Corina?
Yeah, it's a follow-up question I asked before, because it's kinda sticking in my brain. So, you know, we're going out, we're putting out fresh releases, and I read the paper saying that we're gonna save, you know, $150,000 in the trash for, and I love the idea of the automated bins, I think we need them as a city, I think it's a great idea. But then to say we're gonna have more taxes for the people of Cranston because we're gonna charge people who have more trash an extra $150 bucks a year, it just, it just doesn't feel right. To sit there and say we're gonna have savings because we're actually passing more cost onto the people of the city, just for me, I don't know, there's just something about that that doesn't sit well. Well, there already talks about doing the 96 gallon, because I mean, obviously it worked in the 96, and, you know, comparably, if it works in work in a 96 gallon trash, then why do we do 64? How do we land on 64? And I know you had said you had some anecdotal evidence, but how do we get to, to say 64?
In all honesty, what we've been doing is, we've been tracking what other cities and towns have been doing recently. Walworth had initiated that program well over 10 years ago. Uh, Boroughville just went with a 65-65, like we are proposing, and it's working very well, and I believe East Providence, Pawtucket also just went with 65s.
You believe or you're sure?
I'm not sure about East Providence, Pawtucket, but I know Boroughville did, just about a year ago.
Yeah, I'm trying to find a comparable city, but, you know, I know Boroughville is a, has a 65 gallon drum, but, you know, I would say Cranston is a much more densely populated city than Boroughville.
Again, I believe Woodsocket might have done that also, but I don't have that, I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Counsel Monsiello. Again, Mr. Mason, I'm, I don't understand the comparison, because if we look at the comparison, you're not showing what the tipping fee, recycling rate, you're showing 32,000 of savings for the next year under this program, you're not showing what the fee is on, for 14, which is, I don't know, even if you estimate, it's, you know, 4,316, it's not in there. And then the other thing is, is that if we're spending $226,000 a year now, picking up mattresses, what, how can we not think that that's gonna happen again? We're only budgeting half of that. So that if you kind of wanted to get a true comparison, you should have, you have two 4-6 lines on the new contract, and you only have four lines on the current contract, so you really can't see an apples-to-apples savings. I believe you can. The tipping fee is not included in either one of those, the existing or the new contract. Well, this tipping fee adjustment... Well, the tipping, the tipping fee is not charged by waste management, that's charged by Resource Recovery, and we budget almost a million dollars a year for tipping fees. So that's not even, that's not even in the budget. What I'm, what I'm saying is, in the new contract, that we'll be able to save approximately $32,000 a year in tipping fees if we go just from 23 to 28%. Again, this is just a budgeting, just wanted to show you folks that this is what this contract is gonna do for the city. So then again, my question remains, on the pickup of building of discarded items or mattresses, you've only been estimating that's gonna cost us $100,000, there...
onto the people of the city, just for me. I don't know, there's just something about that that, that doesn't sit well. Well, they already talked about doing the ninety-six gallon, cause I mean, obviously it worked the ninety-six. And, you know, comparably, if, if it works and work at a ninety-six gallon trash, then why did we do sixty-four? How did we land on sixty-four? I know you, you had said you had to manage global evidence, but how did we get to, to say sixty-four?
In all honesty, what we've been doing is we've been tracking what other cities and towns have been doing recently. Walworth initiated that program well over ten years ago. Uh, Boroughville just went with a sixty-five, sixty-five like we are proposing, and it's working very well. And I believe East Providence, Pawtucket also just went with sixty-fives.
You believe or you're sure?
I'm not sure about East Providence, Pawtucket, but I know Boroughville did just about a year ago.
Yeah, I'm trying to find a comparable city that, you know, I know Boroughville is a, has a sixty-five gallon drum, but, you know, I would say Cranston is a much more densely populated city than Boroughville.
Again, I believe when Sockit might have done that also, but I don't have that. I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Councilman Lucio? Again, Mr. Mason, I'm, I, I don't understand the comparison because if we look at the comparison, you're not showing what the tipping fee, uh, recycling rate, you're showing thirty-two thousand of savings for the next week or year under this program. You're not showing what the fee is on, for fourteen, which is, I don't know, even if you estimate, it's, you know, four million, three one six, it's not in there. And then the other thing is, is that if we're spending two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars a year now picking up mattresses, what, how, how can we not think that that's gonna happen again? We're only budgeting half of that. So that if you kind of wanted to get a true comparison, you should have, you have two four-six lines on the new contract, and you only have four lines on the current contract. So you really can't see an apples-to-apples savings.
I believe you can. The tipping fee is not included in either one of those, the existing or the new contract.
Well, this tipping fee adjustment.
Well, the tipping, the tipping fee is not charged by waste management. That's charged by Resource Recovery. And we budget almost a million dollars a year for tipping fees. So that's not even, that's not even in the budget. What I'm, what I'm saying is, in the new contract, that we'll be able to save approximately thirty-two thousand dollars a year in tipping fees if we go just from twenty-three to twenty-eight percent. Again, this is just a budgeting. Just wanted to show you folks that this is what this contract is gonna do for the city.
So then again, my question remains, on the pickup of bill of discarded items or mattresses, you've only been estimating that's gonna cost us a hundred thousand? Where, I don't know the history of the last two or three years, we have two hundred and twenty-six thousand here now?
Because the city has been paying for mattress disposal. We, last year, we disposed of nine thousand mattresses in Box Brandy.
Did we ask them to make, make it part of the contract that they would pick up?
They can. They'll charge us two hundred and, they'll, they'll charge us twenty-five dollars per mattress.
And, and can, with the high taxes, you know, kind of similar to, uh, what Council Vice President Farina said, I just feel that, you know, the trash picking, twenty-five dollars, that, that's kind of a lot of money. It just, you know, anytime our taxpayers have to pay more for something, on, on things that they have been in the past, just, I'm having a hard time swallowing that too.
Well, in all honesty, as far as the mattresses go, you folks are probably aware that there was a legislation passed in the General Assembly last year for, uh, Resource Recovery to come up with a mattress recycling program in which the sellers of mattresses, such as Cardies and Sleepies or whoever else sells mattresses, they're actually going to be charging a fee similar to a car charge that the, that the people that sell batteries do. And what they're going to do is, instead of homeowners asking to have them picked up, the people that deliver the mattresses are going to end up taking away. The mattress issue is, is gonna kind of go away within the next year or so. I talked to Resource Recovery today, and they're hoping to have something in place by next January.
Mr. Council President, one final question. I know talking to my colleagues here, um, I, I, I think it's a great thing that for situations where you have Vermin infestations, so that'll kind of solve that problem a little bit. But on the other hand, if you only have sixty-five gallon barrels, and you have families, you know, put more out, what are they gonna do with the extra trash? Just leave it on the side and that'll kind of not alleviate the problem anymore? We're trying to alleviate the problem, that's why. I, I'm just curious, why are we not using a ninety-five gallon trash container or two ninety-five gallon trash containers?
Again, we just have to go with the evidence that has been given to me that says sixty-five gallon is more than enough to take care of a household. And if you want an additional one, you can, you can have one at a hundred and fifty dollars premium.
Councilman Catell? Thank you, President. Uh, through the chair, Mr. Mason, um, just going to try and rehash some things, but from my understanding.
From my understanding, um, this, if we pass this ordinance, it saves a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Am I correct with that number?
That's correct.
And the savings is a result of job losses and job cuts at waste management, is that correct?
I don't have that information from waste management, but that is one of the ways that they do this, is by, by not needing to man two people on a truck.
Well, obviously we're saving a hundred and fifty thousand dollars because we're mechanizing, we're, 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 uh, purchasing barrels that will be picked up by, by the trucks, correct?
That's correct.
And not by the person, correct?
That's correct.
So therefore, individuals or personnel are gonna be lost, is that correct?
One would think so, yes.
Okay, so that, that's one of my problems. I mean, we're passing something, and we don't know the impact as far as, you know, how many jobs are gonna be lost at this point? At a time when I think it's, um, essential to keep, keep people working, uh, in this poor economy. The other, um, question I have is, um, follow all my colleague, uh, Council Lucio. If there's a household that generates a large amount of trash, say a family of six or perhaps eight, uh, people who have many children, their, their option is sixty-five gallon or the next size up, is that correct?
No, they have, they have an option to get an additional sixty-five gallon if they wish.
At their expense?
That's correct.
And, and they're not allowed to use any other trash bins if they have them on hand, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's a problem. All right, thank you.
Uh, Councilman, uh, Council Vice President Farina?
Sorry, Director Mason, I keep rehashing these budget points, but I thought we should ask a couple more committee. So if we have mattress disposal that we're paying for today at two hundred and twenty-six thousand annually, and in the new contract, there is no mattress disposal because people will be expected to have their own mattress disposal or be expected to pay waste management to do it, why wouldn't we see savings of two hundred and twenty-six thousand plus mechanization and reductions for them to get to this new program? If we're, so if we're not paying waste management to do it, we should see at least two twenty-six plus in savings, we're only seeing a hundred and fifty. So what costs more?
Well, we're, we're getting almost three million dollars worth of cuts in this, in this contract. There's a cost there.
There's a cost to everything, I mean, that's why you negotiate. I mean, the question here that we have as body is, you know, A, how did we land on sixty-five gallons? You've given us no hard evidence that sixty-five gallon is the right number. We've asked you questions on if we feel that the average house in Cranston will work with a sixty-five gallon drum, you've given us no hard answers on that. So we're gonna, we're gonna, you're asking us to basically approve a contract with a vendor on soft evidence. That's tough to do. And you're asking us to actually put people out of work potentially and pass expenses onto the taxpayers of Cranston? Those are, those are big decisions for us to fight, I mean.
Uh, Councilman Quebeco?
Thank you, Council President. Well, I, I'd like to comment and follow up on Council Vice President Farina's statement. I think you gotta look at a couple of things. First of all, these barrels are pretty heavy. Sixty-five gallon, uh, container, I believe is twenty-seven pounds without anything in it. So you, you're talking about a large facility for, in, in some of the neighborhoods, I think the ninety, ninety-six gallon might be a little bit too big. And it may be also a difficult thing to store and also to reel out for some people. They even make the thirty-five gallon available to older people so that they're able to push it from the garage to the, to the curb. The, you know, as far as the mattresses are concerned, uh, I think we have to release that. Obviously, um, I don't, I don't want to pay for someone, you know, disposing of mattresses, especially if they're rented properties. I mean, I don't, you know, every, what, ten, ten years, eight, ten years, you're supposed to replace a mattress? So I, you know, we're spending an awful lot of money on this issue, which we should, which the taxpayers shouldn't be paying for. I think there's a balancing act here. Obviously, we need to get, uh, some security, we need to control the rat issue. This, this will accomplish that. You know, I, I'm just not so sure that, um, that one little issue. I mean, if we're worried about jobs, it's gonna cost us more in the contract if we allow, if we keep the system the way it is. We can keep waste management staff the way it is, but the taxpayers are gonna end up paying that difference. I don't think we're, we're, we're trying to save money for the taxpayers, and I think that this is a pretty good balance on that. May, I don't know how many people are gonna need a third barrel. I don't think I will, but I know some people have, uh, a family of four, five, six, and, and that may be an issue. That's something that maybe, uh, Mr. Mason can, can address. Maybe there's some way to, to get some, uh, cooperation on that third barrel. But I think the sixty-five gallon is probably a, a good, um, you know, size to use for, for most people. And, and it's tough to store all these barrels. I don't know where people are gonna put them in the, in the tighter neighborhoods, such as Ward Three and Ward Two. So, I mean, I'm, I, I like, I, I don't think the contract is a bad contract. I think it, it accomplishes some things. They're also paying for all these barrels, uh, for the first two. So the taxpayers are not paying three hundred dollars for the two barrels that they're, they're gonna receive free, you know, as part of this contract. So in balance, I think it's a, it's a good contract. It should help us with recycling, which is something that we need to do. But I, you know, I would agree that, you know, maybe, perhaps there's a little cheaper price that could be gotten for the third barrel. Other than that, I think it's a good contract.
Councilman Shandber?
Thank you, Council President. May I ask a question of the administration? This con, you've already bid out on this, right? They were, they were the, so can I ask, I don't have the minutes from the meeting, did you ask about the ninety-five bin? We are paying them four million dollars a year to pick up our trash. So I'm thinking you have some leverage, Ken, as far as what we want from them. You know, they're giving us two free bins, but what do you do? We're paying them four million dollars a year, so thank you very much. So my question is, you accepted this bid, so we're already like in this, correct?
That's correct. This, this is a done deal already. This, this.
Oh, this, this is a, this is a done deal?
The whole automated pickup was voted on by BoCap back in November. The ordinance that we're looking for is just to better define who's gonna own these bins at the end of the contract, and also discusses bulky waste.
So BoCap didn't question if we could get a ninety-five pound bin at the time?
That's correct.
They just, we just accepted what they proposed?
It was a request for proposal that was, that was, that was evaluated by.
Were there any, was there any other bidders?
Yes, there were two bidders.
All right, and they, were they asked to, to, um?
They were.
Donate, um, two bins?
That's correct.
And did that? But their bid was higher, is that what you're saying?
Waste management's was lower by a total of about five million dollars over the seven-year period. Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Stichels?
Uh, I'm gonna be supporting this. I think that this is, uh, I really, I appreciate the memo. I think it's, uh, it's very thorough, and, uh, we have been asking for these trash containers to deal with the rat problem for quite some time, and I think we should, here, here is a chance to get it, and we should vote for it. Beyond that, I also think sixty-five gallons is a lot of trash. And if you're putting out sixty-five gallons of trash a week, you're putting, you've gotta be putting recycling in your trash. Cardboard, paper, uh, so you've got plenty of, plenty of space with the sixty-five gallons, and we have to get the recycling up or we'll pay the higher fee. And, um, we have to extend the, the length of time that we can use the landfill, or we're gonna have a real expensive trash problem when we're looking for the next place to put our trash.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lee?
I, I have a question for Mr. Mason, or someone. Is the sixty-five gallon the same size that they are using currently in Providence? Yes, that is, that is a big, that is a big, um, container. And it is hard even to fit the sixty-five gallon container in the same areas that the other smaller garbage cans were normal. I think it's a thirty, uh, is the sort of normal garbage can size. So I, I feel like, um, most households will probably be fine, and when they do go over, maybe a neighbor has extra room that weekend. I think it's a good way to go, and I think it really will help the, the rat issue. We've, we've been needed this for a long time, so I'll be voting for this.
Council, uh, Councilman Lucio?
I agree with my colleagues here that it, it's a good thing, and we have to do it, and we have to do less trash. I'm just not comfortable with two bins. I know on any given week, I, I'm gonna exceed that sixty-five gallon requirement. I know I am. You know, I have, you know, seven people living in the house, and, and we're gonna go through it. So if they at least gave me the option of one big bin and one small bin, I guess I could live with that. I could live with that. But I don't like the fact that we're charging Cranston taxpayers, who pay some of the highest taxes in the state, another hundred and fifty-four dollars a week for an extra bin if they need it. Or if they have to pick up mattress, you know, why are we charging taxpayers the highest in the state already? And, and that just bothers me. I mean, if they had an option to pick up, get a bigger trash bin, might be a different story. And again, I, I, I like your memo, but it's not being compared apples to apples here. And, and, you know, Council Farina brought out a great point, that why aren't we saving the twenty, twenty-six dollars? It just, it doesn't add up, it just doesn't add up. So, thank you.
Councilman Vice President Farina?
One final, uh, point. You know, I do agree with everybody in this council, this is a great program. I think automated trash picking is fantastic, we have to call the rat problem. But, you know, I have a fundamental issue with everyone saying we think a sixty-five gallon bin's a lot of trash. I think a sixty-five gallon bin's a lot of trash too. I think Councilman Lee brought it up, Councilman Quebeco brought it up, I think it's a huge bin. But I don't know that if it's gonna, it's gonna make sense for every taxpayer, or even a majority of the taxpayers in the city of Cranston. And that's the one problem I have. So now if we're just gonna say everybody gets a sixty-five gallon trash bin, how many people are we gonna affect that have to go and spend an extra hundred and fifty a year? If the administration came back and says two percent of the populace, I would sit there and say, okay, two percent of the people eat an extra bin, it's not, it's not a problem for the entirety of the city, so let's pass it. If they come back and say forty percent of the people on the average, based on the number of quantity picked up per household, forty percent of the people have to buy an extra bin, then it's a no because we're just taking the money and passing it on to the taxpayers. So that's the fundamental flaw I have with the contract.
Councilman Botts?
Thank you, Council President. I have a question regarding, you said BoCap already approved the contract. So if this particular ordinance is voted no, what, what's gonna happen?
What you're, what you're voting on is that the bins will become the property of the city at the end of the contract, and it also is putting the burden on the property owners for bulky waste pickup, which includes mattresses.
I have the same issue that Councilman Lucio and Councilman Farina have in that, uh, it worries me that we're locked in to the sixty-five gallon trash bin. Uh, the recycling bin, I think, is, is adequate, to be honest. I mean, if you can fill a sixty-five gallon recycling bin in one week, you're, you're drinking a lot of beer, so, um, you should check yourself in. But, um, the sixty-five gallon, uh, trash bin, if you drive around on any trash day in my ward or in any other ward, I think you're gonna see there are multiple trash bins out on the curb along with their recycling bins. And these bins, these trash barrels are all generally in the forty to sixty gallon range. And if there's multiple bins out there, that means two forty gallon bins are gonna exceed a sixty-five gallon bin. And my question is, is that are we really helping the rat problem if trash is gonna be left either uncovered or partially covered when the lid is actually being pushed up and the garbage is being exposed? Looking over Walworth's, uh, plan for their system, they offer a greater amount of flexibility in terms of if you're elderly, you can come and, and apply for a thirty-some-odd gallon bin.
Which is what we will also.
Right. And what they will also do is if you think you need a ninety-five gallon bin, they'll come to your house and assess your trash needs. And I guess if they have the barrels, barrels available, you can swap those out at no additional charge, uh, one time only. And I think that's the problem with this contract, is that there's no flexibility as far as, I know in my household, I have a five-person household, and we'll, I'll fill that, I'll come pretty close to filling that ninety-five gallon barrel, and, uh, two recycling bins as well. So it's not the fact that I'm not recycling, it's the fact that we generate a lot of trash. But the problem is, is that the contract's already approved, so it seems like between a rock and a hard place here. And I wish BoCap was a little bit more diligent in what they did. Thank you.
Councilman Quebeco?
Thank you, Council President. Something I just noticed, and Mr. Mason, maybe you can, through the chair, maybe you can clarify this. I noticed on that mattress disposal, it's based on nine thousand mattresses in a year? Is that the way I'm reading that?
That's correct.
So we only have eighty-three thousand residents. So obviously, a lot of that has to be from apartment complexes or rental properties. And I don't think that all the taxpayers should be responsible for those kind of disposals. In fact, most of the, uh, big mattress discounterers or mattress sales companies will dispose of the mattress when they give. will dispose of the mattress when they give, bring you a new one. So I, I think that we may need to do some more policing on this issue, but I don't see any problem with, uh, you know, I think those are rental. So I didn't, I don't think you're gonna be charging the average homeowner for mattress disposal. It's gonna be someone who owns rental property, so I don't see any problem with charging them for that. Um, and I also noticed through the chair, just like I asked Mr. Mason, I, I noticed that televisions, computers, tires, waste oil, and other metals can still be brought to the higher department free of charge, is that correct?
That, that's correct.
So I think that, you know, there are some concessions, there are some things that are good. I agree with Councilman Stieglus on the, it'll force people to recycle a little more. Um, you, you'll be forced to put more in the recycling bin as opposed to the other sixty-five gallon, uh, container. So I, I think it's a, it's a good contract.
Any else? Council Senator?
So can I just recap? The contract's been approved. The ordinance before us is just to take all the control, ownership of the bins after the time period ends. So the ordinance has nothing to do with the contract, basically. The contract's already been approved. Hypothetically, the only way would be to rebid it out and do it all over again, and I'm not sure if we can, can we, we can do that. So basically, voting on an ordinance that's kinda just, is a supplement to the agreed contract. Is that a good recap to this solicitor?
That's a good recap, except for the one thing, that the bulky waste, which seems to be the main, uh, item at this point. Uh, the last sentence in clause three, uh, talks about the Department of Public Works applies a means for the property owners accordingly to pay for the disposal of bulky waste. So another way to look at this is to say that this is a use fee for someone who actually uses the service, and then they pay for it directly. Or, the council during budget time could appropriate another four hundred thousand dollars for mattresses all over the state to come to Cranston to get picked up for free. So it's one way or the other.
Uh, Councilman Macedo?
Uh, to the solicitor, is that what the mayor's gonna propose? He's gonna put a line up in two thousand fifteen budget? Because I mean, we, you proposed the budget, we just go over it and then-
Well, what we have here is that the homeowner would pay for the mattress. So actually, what we're proposing would not be the four hundred thousand. It will be the homeowner pay directly to the Rhode Island East West Recovery, that the city of Cranston stay out of the mattress business, especially the used one.
Councilman Macedo?
I just wanted to comment, whether it's a fee or whatever, a fee still counts. And I still have a fundamental problem with having somebody pay a fee, which is really a tax. And I have a problem in not having a choice on what size bin, you know, our taxpayers should use. I mean, Councilman Bott said that in Warwick, and, and it's true, you can get a small, a medium, or a large. And I'm just saying that some families need a large, and to charge them more is, is, is just crazy with the fees everybody's paying. That's all. Thank you.
The only comment I would have to that is, should people who aren't tied up to the sewer pay a sewer fee?
It, 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 it does nothing-
It's a use, it's a use, it's a use fee which directly correlates to someone's consumption of the system. It's not, if I don't throw away a mattress in ten years, I'm subsidizing someone who may throw it away every year. So from my perspective, never having put a mattress on the curb, my tax dollars subsidizing someone who doesn't tell Cardis to take it away. So if you look at it, I'm sort of from another viewpoint. From that, from that point of view, it's a direct user fee cast onto the consumer, which is not a tax.
May I respond, Council President? That's a great idea, Mr. Kirschbaum, because for the fourth of what, I don't have sewers, and most of the residents don't, so they should be paying lower taxes than, because they're making use of the sewers.
No, because the sewer is a fee-for-use system, just like the mattresses would be. If you have a mattress you wanna dispose of, you pay a disposal fee. If you'd like to flush into the sewer, you pay a sewer fee. The sewer fees, as you know, don't go for any other purpose but to support the sewer system. And thus likewise, a mattress fee won't go for any other purpose than to get rid of the old mattress. Doesn't go for schools, doesn't go for roads, it doesn't go for paving. It goes for nothing else but to remove this dirty mattress on the side of the road, which is your, your property anyway, that you choose to left it on the side of the road, which somehow becomes our responsibility to get rid of for you. So what we think is, that the person who threw it on the curb should pay to get rid of it.
Uh, Councilman Jerry?
Thank, thank you, Council President. I, I'm, I'm not happy with this, um, ordinance, there's some, there's problems with it. However, I will be supporting it, uh, due to the fact that I think this council needs to be proactive. Summer's coming, we do have a rat problem. Uh, hopefully, uh, by passing this, uh, ordinance, it might alleviate, uh, a situation that proliferates during the summer months. So, uh, I will be supporting this ordinance.
Councilman Lee?
Um, we were just doing the math here, Councilman Vecchio and I, and, um, there were, uh, there's eighty thousand residents in Cranston, and there's nine thousand mattresses being disposed of. That's one in ten people disposing of mattresses. I think that, um, you know, we are getting mattresses from other cities in that case. And, um, this is a good idea. I think maybe it would start to curb that disposal, or using Cranston as a dumping ground for mattresses. So, um, I, I think this is a good idea, I'll be supporting it.
Final word, I promise you.
I'm gonna ask a final word.
Well, my final- Thank you, Council President. Uh, you know, I'm gonna support this because based on what Councilman Santa Maria said, you know, we can't really change it anyway, because BOCAP has negotiated the deal and initiated the contract. I believe we need the bins, but I think maybe we probably could've asked a few more questions in the BOCAP phases. Maybe we should think about sending a councilperson to some of those meetings going forward, so we can have our word in the process. I think we're kinda left in the dark as to what happened with the negotiations, and I think it's, it's fine they negotiated the contract, and I'm sure that this came up, but it would've been nice if we'd have somebody from us there to actually weigh the concerns of the taxpayers, because we were elected by the taxpayers to serve, so-
Anybody else? Uh, I'm gonna make a few comments here. Uh, Cranston, Iowa, is the only city with ninety-six gallon containers. Correct?
I believe that's correct.
So problems, it's hanging by the way. And I'm sure there are more family members in those tenants that look crazy. Uh, they get by with it. The rat problem recently seems to have increased when they put the containers in progress. The rats move, they could get food. Now they're here. This should solve that problem. When I ran two years ago, one of my campaign pledges was to get automated trash bins in Cranston to solve the rat problem. Everybody knows the rat problem, how devastating it is to communities, how devastating it is to families. Uh, and this was solved. As far as the cost, what we cut, it's a done deal. So it's either yes or no, whether we keep the containers for the next ten years, or we don't. I'm voting for it. I think we should've, uh, I wish that Mr., uh, I wish the administration told us earlier that this was not approved in the contract, we were just voting on it as a supplement to the contract. This debate wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't have gone on this long. Are there no other questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made second, any further discussion? Are there none, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee? Yes.
Councilman Stieglus?
Yes.
Councilman Bott?
Yes.
Senator McAdams?
Yes.
Councilman Macedo?
No.
Councilman Soria?
Yes.
Councilman Verdi?
Yes.
Councilman Vito?
Yes.
Councilman Mina?
Yes.
Uh, to the administration, uh, are we gonna go into the discussion? I don't know, I just want to talk. Okay, thank you. Uh, ordinance committee, uh, Councilman Jerry?
Thank you, Council President Lianey. Uh, ordinance committee met, and we passed ordinance one dash fourteen dash oh four, ordinance amendment of Title Ten, Chapter Thirty-two, and Chapter Twenty-four of the Code of City of Cranston, two thousand and five, title motor vehicles in traffic. Jordan in Flint Avenue, uh, the administration has endorsed this, and the traffic engineer has endorsed this ordinance. entertain a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Second, any discussion, and a motion? Are there none, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee? Yes.
Councilman Stieglus?
Yes.
Councilman Bott?
Yes.
Councilman Verdi?
Yes.
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 Yes. Do we not find it to initiate a new cycle?
Uh, the first item that was endorsed by the Finance Committee is a five-year commercial tax incentive, or tax incentive for Cafe Etree.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion made second, any discussion, and a motion? Are there none, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee? Yes.
Councilman Stieglus?
No.
Councilman Bott?
Yes.
Councilman Jarry?
Yes.
Councilman Vito?
Yes.
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 Uh, next is the monthly real estate intangible tax abatements as recommended by the city assessor.
Motion approved. Second. Motion made second, any discussion, and a motion? Are there none, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Stieglus?
Yes. Yes.
Councilman Vito?
Yes.
Councilman Soria?
Yes.
Councilman Verdi?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, next is the motor vehicle tax abatements recommended by the assessor.
Motion approved. Second. Motion made second, any discussion? Are there none, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee? Yes.
Councilman Stieglus?
Yes.
Councilman Bott?
Yes.
Councilman Jarry? Councilman Vito?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Verdi?
Yes.
Councilman Vito?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, finally, there's the, uh, tax interest waiver approvals as recommended by the city treasurer.
Motion approved. Second. Motion made second, any discussion, and a motion? Are there none, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee? Yes.
Councilman Stieglus?
Yes.
Councilman Bott?
Yes.
Councilman Jarry? Councilman Vito?
Yes.
Councilman Soria?
Yes.
Councilman Verdi?
Yes.
Councilman Vito?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Stieglus?
Yes, uh, there was a, uh, two questions that came up at the Finance Committee meeting concerning the, uh, tax incentive that I asked Mr. Kirschbaum to look into. Uh, one was, uh, the assertion that even though, uh, Mr. Coletta did not, or Cafe, that the business Cafe Etree did not own the property, they were eligible for this, uh, tax incentive. And that was the first question. And the second question was that, um, the, uh, because this, this proposal would not be allowed under the current ordinance, uh, but Mr. DiBoni said because the application had been filed before the ordinance changed, that therefore the, uh, Cafe Etree was eligible. So I, I realize we voted on it, but I did wanna get the, the, uh, legal, uh, I basically forgot to ask prior to the vote.
I've not had, I've not had a chance to, uh, to research, to fully research it, but based on my initial research, I'll write a memorandum of the, the Finance Committee if you'd like. Based on my initial look at this, that, um, this, the old ordinance, the wording seems to indicate that a, a business owner or the owner of the property would be eligible for the incentive. So at least on that part, I think that that was safe. In terms of the, um, the current, or the applicant applying under the old ordinance and not being ratified while the new one's in effect, I'd like to continue to research that a little further, and we'll be back to the Finance Committee meeting. I think it's, I think it's appropriate, but I just wanted to make that clear.
Does the council solicitor have anything to add on those questions?
I, I don't, I have not researched it. I will research and go through the research with, uh, the solicitor, and get back to you.
Thank you.
Councilman Sanri?
Thank you, Council President. Um, when I asked Mr. DiBoni, he said, either they have to own the property, or there was the other, that, the lease. Triple, triple net lease. So they had, that had nothing to do with the change of the new ordinance, that was in the old ordinance. So, he had fallen on one of those two criteria, I believe. Yes. Okay, thank you.
Uh, the Claims Committee, Councilman Lee?
We have just one claim to, um, report, uh, and that is, uh, fifty-dollar property damage that went to, uh, Lawrence DiBoni.
Okay, no actions needed on this. Public care, any member of the public would like to speak on any undocumented ID? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record, please. All right, no one wants to speak, we'll close that public portion of the ID. Large city officials, um, so the board can review. The, we appoint Lori Calvino, uh, second alternate member for the term to expire, uh, June twenty-fifth to twenty-fourth.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made second, any discussion, and a motion? Are there none, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee? Yes.
Councilman Stieglus?
Yes.
Councilman Bott?
Yes.
Councilman Jarry?
Yes.
Councilman Vito?
Yes.
Councilman Soria?
Yes.
Councilman Verdi?
Yes.
Councilman Vito?
Yes.
Councilman Mina?
Yes.
Tax assessment board review, the appointment of Michael Sikosho as first alternate member. Is there a motion? Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made second, any discussion, and a motion? Are there none, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee? Yes.
Councilman Stieglus?
Yes.
Councilman Bott?
Yes.
Councilman Jarry?
Yes.
Councilman Vito?
Yes.
Councilman Soria?
Yes.
Councilman Verdi?
Yes.
Councilman Vito?
Yes.
Yes. Appointment of Gina Gould Howard as second alternate member of the tax assessment board review.
So moved. Second.
Motion made second, any discussion? Are there none, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee? Yes.
Councilman Stieglus?
Yes.
Councilman Bott?
Yes.
Councilman Jarry?
Yes.
Councilman Vito?
Yes.
Councilman Soria?
Yes.
Councilman Verdi?
Yes.
Councilman Vito?
Yes.
Yes. City council, the turn of order appointment of Anthony C. Parry. Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made second, any discussion, and a motion? Are there none, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee? Yes.
Councilman Stieglus?
Yes.
Councilman Bott?
Yes.
Councilman Jarry?
Yes.
Councilman Vito?
Yes.
Councilman Soria?
Yes.
Councilman Verdi?
Yes.
Councilman Vito?
Yes.
Councilman Mina?
Yes.
Uh, personal appeals, appointment of Gary J. Gero as an alternate. Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made second, any discussion? Are there none, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee? Yes.
Councilman Stieglus?
Yes.
Councilman Bott?
Yes.
Councilman Jarry?
Yes.
Councilman Vito?
Yes.
Councilman Sanri?
Yes.
Councilman Verdi?
Yes.
Councilman Vito?
Yes.
Councilman Mina?
Yes.
Appointment of Eleanor Marisi as an alternate member. Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made second, any discussion? There are none, please take your role.
To the chair?
Yes.
Yes, uh, council president, um, I know this elected her as an alternate member, however, the charter calls for, uh, just three positions for the personal appeals board, there's no provision for an alternate member in the charter.
All right, all right, we're done.
It's not really a county.
So we remove this second, any additions?
I'm sure she's a nice person.
When the city charter cannot appoint an alternate member, so we move on to the appointment of Michael Moketi as a full-time member.
So moved.
Second. Second, discussion. Any discussions, councilman Agel?
I, I just want to, uh, clarify, um, is Michael Moketi any relation to the public safety officer, traffic engineer? Is there any relationship? I just want to clarify before I vote.
Any other questions for councilmen Spikels?
I, I don't know either. But if not, I don't.
Councilman Sanders?
Um, council president, is there somebody currently on that we're not appointing tonight?
Yes, yes. Councilman Agel, you have a question?
Yes, Mr. Trump, Betty Wood Three.
Thank you, thank you.
But I'm, I'm just hesitant, I don't know if this is a relative situation, I, I don't know, is any, anyone know him personally?
Well, I, is your attorney, I don't know, I, I don't, I don't.
Is, is, is there any relationship between he and the traffic engineer?
I, I don't know, but we have this resume, does it mention any relationship?
I mean, I'm supportive.
I know.
He works out of the office with Vito Schultze.
I know he's chairman of the, uh, uh, charter review. Trump, L. K., David, three. Motion made second, any further discussion? There are none, please take your role.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spikels?
Yes.
Councilman Bass?
Yes.
Councilman Jerry, Paco?
Yes.
Councilman Seal?
Yes.
Councilman Sereia?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Before we move any further, I'd like to, uh, thank, uh, Anthony Moretti. If I stand up and introduce yourself, I'm a member of the council. He's out in general, he's a fast amount of experience from five days of the CPA, worked for personal merit, he runs a company, so well, well, well qualified, I think he do a great job.
Council president, ladies and members of the council, I do appreciate the opportunity so, so much. I've been a, a resident of the city of Cranston all my life, with the exception of approximately four years. And, uh, in that, and have this opportunity, I promise to serve you honorably. I invite you to please call me, uh, anytime and, uh, and I sincerely look forward to working with you again. Thank you very much.
Uh, finance chairman Spikels will be your best friend.
Congratulations, congratulations.
Mr. Council president, do we have a documented resolution? Yeah, who's it now? I think at the end of the agenda we have one.
Okay, sorry, I didn't see, I just had a question, thank you.
You want a city officer, do you want? No?
Yes.
Director of the room?
Thank you, Tom Fred. Uh, Deputy D. Stephen McGret, uh, respectfully request that he continue service for one year, he's met all the criteria and we urge passage.
Motion approved, second.
That's the president, Stephen, Matt.
I'm sorry. McGret, check.
Scratch.
Steve McGret, you guys are the best.
Put it back in my table.
Well, definitely.
Motion?
Motion made second.
Motion made second, any discussion? There are none, please take your role.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spikels?
Yes.
Councilman Bass?
Yes.
Councilman Jerry, Paco?
Yes.
Councilman Seal?
Yes.
Councilman Sereia?
Yes.
Councilman Bell?
Yes.
Councilman Ray?
Yes.
Councilman Ray?
Yes.
Uh, also, council president, uh, private Timothy Colantonio Princeton fired upon. Uh, requests that he continue service for one year, he has met all the requirements and we urge passage.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made second, any discussion? There are none, please take your role.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spikels?
Yes.
Councilman Bass?
Yes.
Councilman Jerry, Paco?
Yes.
Councilman Seal?
Yes.
Councilman Sereia?
Yes.
Councilman Bell?
Yes.
Councilman Ray?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Tom Fred. Uh, since on the agenda is BoCap approval of the London Avenue, uh, state property. Is there any discussion on this motion? Terry Bolton?
My name is council president. Hey, members of the council, again, my name is John Bolton, I'm here on behalf of Copinato Group. Uh, with me this evening, uh, from Copinato Group is Kelly Coats. And I'm going to ask Kelly to, to hold up, or put up a, a board showing the property that is, um, the subject of our discussion this evening. Uh, and I want to say at the outset, what we're not looking for the council to do tonight, we're not looking for the council to approve, give a final approval of the sale of this property to the Copinato Group. What we're looking for is authority to move forward with that property, and I'll kind of explain that a little bit later. Uh, the subject property is assessor's plat sixteen slash four, lot one eighty-three, and it is, uh, the property that is directly across New London Avenue from the existing Capital Qu development, I think everybody's familiar with. This property was conveyed to the city by the state in September of nineteen eighty-one. And it's important to note that in the deed from the state to the city, there were several deed restrictions. The first restriction of that, there would be no buildings within a hundred and fifty feet of the adjoining residential property. The second restriction is that the use of the property by the city would be restricted to recreational, um, educational or, uh, conservation uses by the city. And the deed goes on to say that if either one of those deed restrictions is violated, the property would revert back to the ownership of the state. Uh, so the Copinato Group is interested in purchasing this property in the city for transportation purposes only. And as I've had discussions with, um, various city solicitors, um, it is our opinion that under the provisions of section seven oh nine of the city charter, the city is able to sell this property without a competitive bidding process so long as the purchasing agent makes that recommendation to BoCap, which the purchasing, purchasing agent did. And then that BoCap takes a majority vote, which they did in, um, January. And I set that in a memo to the purchasing agent back in December, and I think Mr. Coats has some materials they can hand out to the members of the council that include copies of that memo from my office, as well as the decision of BoCap. So what we're asking the council to do tonight is the following, we're asking that the council direct the purchasing agent to proceed with the process of the sale of the property to the Copinato. And that would be conditioned on these four items. Number one, that Copinato, at Copinato's own expense, goes to the state and gets the state to release that reverted provision that I mentioned earlier, that it had to be used by the city. So if Copinato is not able to do that successfully with the state, that's the end of everything. You, the city can't sell the property to Copinato. So number one, Copinato has to go to the state and get that released. Number two is that when the property is conveyed to Copinato, and this is probably the most important part, when the property is conveyed to Copinato, the deed from the city to Copinato would contain a deed restriction that states that Copinato or any successor entitled would only be, would be able to use the property only for transportation improvement purposes. And I'm going to let Mr. Coats take a few minutes to describe exactly what that means. The third condition is that the sale would be subject to an appraisal pursuant to the charter section seven oh eight, subsection G. And then finally, that once we do all this, once we prepare the deed with the deed restriction, once we get the release from the state, once we get the appraisal, we then come back to you, we come back to the city council, uh, with a resolution that the city council would have the final approval of selling this property to the Copinato Group. So again, what we're looking for is your approval to stop this process with the opportunity to come back to you once we've satisfied all these conditions. And I'm going to ask Mr. Coats to explain what exactly, um, the transportation uses that they're looking for.
Not sure whether the board is able to see the jug handle right here, but I think we're already, we're all familiar with jug handles. And so as part of our redevelopment of what we now call a training school, we are coming in with traffic improvements. That has been referred to this committee, to this council, it's been referred to the planning board, and we've usually determined to do an MPD development over there, which gives the council total control of the development. But the off-site improvements required for that development need to be done at the entrance to Chapel View, because whether how you develop that property, the traffic is going to come off Route Two, and people are not going to cross over this entrance to go to Sapanas Crossroad, to come down here and then to take a right and get in it, they're going to use this, whether they go left in or whether they go right in, right in from, uh, northbound or left in from southbound. So in order to accommodate that, we're putting in a jug handle here. Now also DOT has asked that we add another left turn lane to Route Two, northbound, into, um, Shannon Valley Parkway, westbound. So we're shifting the entire roadway over by a lane. In that process, we may add a boulevard effect in the middle of Route Two, that will be dependent upon what DOT determines, but that's been the current consensus, which will shift the lanes further. All of that shifts it into this parcel. So it's our request that we be enabled to go through this process to lift only the transportation portion through state properties and then enable us to do a jug handle, retention base facilities and be associated with that, all that are linked into the, uh, transportation improvements to Route Two. Any property that has a roadway put on it will be dedicated back to the state in the form of a, um, of, uh, the, the highway pass. And so, um, this has been vetted through right out and, um, and now we're coming before you. All the roadway improvements will be done at our sole cost and expense, all the designs at our sole cost. To put this in perspective, you can see all the developments here and the parcel in this area. And so it is impossible to widen up the throat into Chapel View Boulevard because buildings are constructed and built there. And you furthermore, you cannot shift any roadways onto that side because you have a sidewalk and then immediately you have the historic front wall, so we can't move this, the roadway that way. Lastly, over here on Sapanas Crossroad, you know, that, that throat is already established, Sapanas is already established, and, and it's just probably not the best practice at all to eliminate the entrance to this parcel from Route Two and force anyone to use Sapanas. And that would put a burden on Sapanas, that's just not wise transportation plan. So in terms of our team, you know, we've gone orderly about this, even prior to purchasing the training school, almost all buildings have been knocked down, and we invested well over a million at this stage right now. And, um, and so we're accelerating our efforts, but transportation always forms the bones of good development. And we don't eat in the public trough, we're not asking the state or the city to subsidize us on the traffic improvements. We're fine to do them all. However, in order to accommodate that, we need the land, to accommodate the jug handle and to accomplish that.
Uh, any questions on councilman Sanders?
Uh, yeah, my first question is to, uh, the solicitors, whether this is, uh, properly before us under the open meetings law? And that a member of the public, uh, looking at this agenda, or a member of the council like me, would have no idea that this was, uh, what was going to be discussed or that there was going to be a vote?
Councilman Spikels, um, the notice that is on here is BoCap approval of New London Avenue property. Uh, I think that the presentation began with BoCap, an explanation that BoCap had approved this under one provisions. Um, we discussed this with the attorneys a little bit because we felt that, you know, the belt suspenders approach basically was a good idea, get back to the council after appraisal, so I don't know that there's any required vote tonight when it comes back to the council, it's going to require a vote, a required vote at this point. I don't think Mr. Bolton is asking for a vote tonight.
I, I, I think a vote just directing the purchasing agent to stop this process, but I absolutely agree with you, and I think the most, uh, relevant provision of that is that we have to come back to the council for final action. So there's nothing binding on the council other than a direction to the purchasing agent to stop this process. And it also gives Copinato, uh, the ability to then go to the state and seek the release of the reverter because the state could say, well, you can come and seek the release, or is what, on what standing do you have to do that?
Well, I would just say that I don't see how we, it's under executive communication. And it says BoCap approval of New London Avenue state property, so I'm assuming we're going to have some kind of executive communication concerning BoCap's action, which is fine, but then to ask the council to take a vote, uh, sounds pretty, uh, marginal to me, especially when I hear that there's this, uh, provision on the land about, uh, no buildings and, uh, near the, near the neighborhood residential properties, and I feel like those folks should be, should be noticed and we should have the opportunity to hear from them whether there's, you know, they have concerns.
Well, just to be clear, I think that the, the issue with the reverter is that the city, uh, was, when it was given to the city, the city was restricted by those conditions, those conditions will still be in there, uh, and this is, you know, which would be as a transportation improvement, so, uh, I, you know, I, I agree with you in some sense that, uh, the full explication was not in the, uh, document, and it should have probably been under a separate item as you had new business, but I would like at least to be able to communicate to the purchasing agent, uh, that this is going to be the process followed, because there have been a number of communications between the city solicitor, me, uh, Mr. Bolton, outside, uh, Marcella, on the proper process to follow. This is going to be a neat question, legal question, that I think it probably, you know, the apparent crisis of executive communication was really through the administration's questions about a legal process that it got here. Had it, had it formulated legal process that meets both sections of the charter and the section of the code on conveyance of property.
Wouldn't it make sense to refer it to the ordinance committee and then, or whatever the appropriate committee is and then, uh...
Council?
Do you want?
Council president?
That does, councilman Spikels, finish?
Well, I'm not sure we go to ordinance, I mean, what you're really doing here is getting, what we're seeking to do is get a direction to the purchasing agent on what the process is, if there was a disagreement initially or a question with the purchasing agent as to whether there was a conflict between seven oh nine... as to whether there was a conflict between seven oh eight and seven oh nine. BOCAP approved this, the waiver, the big waiver. And now what we're doing is sort of a hybrid process to go back and get an appraisal and bring it back for the council for a vote on conveyance.
Okay, but it's still, the developer seeking a vote. I feel like under the open meetings law, we need to tell the public when we're going to vote on something.
Right.
Counsel President, I didn't get the impression we're voting on this thing because under executive communications, there's no vote going to be taken tonight anyway, right? Why would we refer it to committee? I, this looks like it's information only. There's no, no ordinance, this. Are we, are we going to vote on this tonight?
I have a suggestion that what we could, that without a vote, I think we can just go back to the person, legal can go back to the purchasing agent and explain the process that we've worked out for this approval and going back to the state on the reverter issue.
So our intentions were to vote on this tonight or not? So there would be no referral to committee either? Okay.
Thank you, Counsel President. I think we're getting hung up on this vote issue. It depends on what you're voting to do. All you're doing is giving direction to continue the process. It's not a final approval. The sale of this conveyance cannot go forward without two or three more steps, I understand it, Mr. Bolton. So this is just to keep the process going. They don't want to spend another million dollars and then be told that, you know, you couldn't even get to the next level. But it's certainly not a final approval and the public will certainly have plenty of opportunity to weigh in on it.
I, I think it's a great project. I think it's a well-利用, good use of the property. However, if we vote to direct the purchasing agent to do something, the council can all be impeached. I see this as a, it's true. I mean, you can't direct any deposit point to the charter to do anything. So I see this as an executive decision with a letter saying that, you know, it is the intent of the city by whoever the power is that gave to go ahead and do that and move forward with it.
Well, I, I just feel that at some point in time, the council should give the developer a certain sense of whether it be by vote or whether it be by communication to him that this is something that they can't, could someday approve, not now. I think if you're spending that much money on this particular project, I applaud the developer for coming before the council. Because we've seen projects that have come all wrapped before the council, before anyone even knows about it. And it's kind of a done deal without any input. So I applaud the developer and his attorney for coming before us today so you can look at this and you can say to yourself, you know, they're really including us on the ground floor in this. And all they want from us is to say, look, before we invest a lot of time and money into this project, what do you guys think about it? Can we go to the state and approach them about developing it? Then come back to you with our final plan and by the way, some money so we can further grow the tax base in this city to help everyone. So I think from a business friendliness standpoint, that vote aside or procedural issues aside, that if we use this as a communication tool on the sale of a property, which is on the agenda, it would help the developer get a sense of, is this project going to be helpful?
Counselman Kevin?
Thank you, Counsel President. It's my impression that this was informational only. That's my impression to get it out there and make us comprehend and understand this project. I mean, I have no intention of voting. But I do have some questions for the developer, if that's okay. So fourteen acres, has there been an appraisal amount? Has the city, have you offered any X amount of dollars at this point?
And that's one of the things we were seeking is direction for the city to stop that process. Because under the charter, the purchasing agent is responsible for obtaining that appraisal on the city's behalf. And that's what, we're just trying to get that all rolling. And whether the council wants to take a vote or not, quite frankly, it doesn't matter. As long as we're able to proceed as the solicitor said, we're fine.
Okay, my next question. It seems to me if you want to broaden the road or just rest where I've created another lane, I guess a left-hand turn takes the end of Shaniquet so it goes down, heading, it would be heading south, to my correct. Fourteen acres is quite a bit of land to acquire to do that. I mean, you know, that's my concern. My second concern, was there any offer to the city of an easement or a lease to that area of land?
You can't do a highway because ultimately it's a state road and then the property has to be dedicated to the state, number one. Number two is the city can't convey just the part that we need for the road widening and the jug handle because then you create a landlocked parcel behind it, which is illegal. So.
And I'm sure that once this project gets in motion, all gets rolling, the amenities of the area as far as foliage and trees and so on and so forth, that would be something that you present before the council as far as the, from the highway and from the other roads, how the aesthetics would look.
I mean, this would, once we get to that point of actually presenting a plan for that, that would be considered a major land development, subject to review by the planning board as any land development is required with respect to traffic, with respect to landscaping, lighting.
So that's all part of the package, my understanding? Okay, thank you.
To the chair, to the solicitors, can we make a motion to approve the process as laid out by the solicitors?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the process as laid out by the solicitors.
Second.
Motion being second. Any discussion on the motion to approve the process? Counsel, go back here.
Thank you, Counsel President. I can actually almost see my home on the map. So I'm probably the one that lives as close to this as anyone. And I've lived there a long time, so I know the area well. This isn't an area where there could be any development anyway. I mean, it's, it would be impossible. And it is, would be, it is landlocked. Since the development on Route 2 and Chapelview, Saco Nasa came out great. What they're proposing here is really needed if, you know, with the expansion going on in Chapelview and in Garden City. Because when you, as we all know, a right-hand turn lane or a jugular turn is so much more preferable to the left, to the left-hand turn lane that we have currently. And there was a ramp there at one time that went across that parcel. And I miss that ramp, to be honest with you, because I think it's more congested now than it was when we had that other ramp that went toward Route 37. So I think we need, we definitely need this. And also that I'm glad to see that part of the proposal is that a second left-hand turn lane on Shaniquet Valley Parkway going up the hill, which would be toward where I live. Because that, that area, that left-hand lane backs up quite a bit on any given day, about three, four in the afternoon. So, and I don't think there's any concern about, there are some wetlands there. I don't think you can really, there's nothing else that could go there. And in fact, I don't think you could, there's as much vegetation there that would, that you could even touch probably because of the wetlands issues. The state would probably not allow it. It's all grassy area, there's some woods. In fact, deer even, I've even seen deer in that area at times. So I don't, but this, I think this is an exceptional use of this parcel since all it does is create a better traffic pattern for us. And I think the residents will be happy with it. And I don't, you know, I don't see there being any downside to it.
I have a minor point of parliamentary procedure is not getting in trouble with open meetings rules. I think we should keep the discussions remain to the process and not necessarily the development. Because this was advertised to go over the development and the things of the development, just the process on which they have to go through to get to where we need to be.
Just information.
Counsel President, may I ask one question? Is your mean to the project, to the developer? In your opinion, will this ramp alleviate the bad traffic situation that's down? There's been a lot of accidents there. There's been, it's been a health and safety issue.
Well, Mr. Counsel President, I can't testify on traffic, even though I drive a lot. But I can't pay you this, I can't pay you this. You've got a good question. And let me get my hangup here and why your process point is so open. My traffic study, what does it look like when I presented for the training school? Do I just say the existing roads work? And, you know, and back in nineteen, back in nineteen eighty, when ninety-something, when Captain Flynn was still here, they made us assume that the $100,000 for a retail at the training school someday. And we go back and hang on that to the city and say, well, I don't care whether it works the road or not. I got it in a new headset and put $100,000 there. You know, I mean, how do I make my traffic study look like? What are the traffic improvements? So I can't be so presumptuous at that stage when I come before you for a reason as to say we're doing all of this. What processes did I notice and all of that? So this process is really important to lock it in. And in your heart of hearts, you know that I want to do the traffic improvements that will make this job work. Because if it doesn't, we're the number one guy that gets hurt. So I don't want to eat at the trough. I want to spend our own dollars, we want to improve it. And so I appreciate your help on the, on the process if we can get that.
Thank you, Counsel President.
Counselman Seedorf?
If we're going to take a vote through the chair, don't we have to suspend the rules?
So it doesn't go to the committee? Just on the process, I'm seeing why it would go to the committee.
That's not my point. I guess, I thought if you scheduled for vote, it was covered by the open meetings laws, is that correct?
It's only a vote that the process can influence.
All right, okay.
The original proposal.
Okay.
The original clarification.
Counselman Seedorf?
Thank you, Counsel President. You go in favor of the process. And I applaud Carpi and Otto who come before us tonight and outline the proposal. And I wish them luck on their travails through the Byzantine process of the state and everything else. So thank you, good luck.
Could I just go back through the, what you're proposing as a process is you would, you would buy the entire parcel, assuming you get these approvals down the road from us and from the state. You would buy the parcel, you would construct the new road improvements, then you would deed that back to the state?
Yes.
And so would you be deeding back to the state the entire fourteen acres or only the improvements?
The roadway-related improvements.
So you would keep the fourteen acres, the balance?
Correct. Which would be deed restricted, that we couldn't use it for anything other than roadway improvements.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'm going to be voting against this, not because I'm against it as an idea, but I think when we vote, we owe it to the public to let them know that there's going to be a vote on something. So I, we'll be voting against endorsing a process. If it went to committee or if it properly noticed, I'd have no problem with voting in favor of it. Thank you.
Any discussion? Any quick comments on the process? Clear, please, State of the Hall.
Counsel Madri?
Yes.
Counsel Seedorf?
No.
Counsel Vax?
Yes.
Counsel Perry, Michael?
Yes.
Counsel Seedorf?
Yes.
Counsel Perry?
Yes.
Counsel Nani?
Yes.
Counsel Rado?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, Counsel President Communications. It's me. The suspension reform bill. The closing tax rate of this city of $1 million.
Good luck there.
Money that we cannot afford. I'm hoping that the administration can take a rude look and raise a thinking after that loss. And I'm looking at our own pension reform, something about maybe tying Obamacare and some of the retirees pensions out of the possible. But I think we should be looking in directions to save money for the tax rate of the city. And here, you know, the federal Obamacare, the act there are very similar, right? Get four different possible plans. I'm just hoping we can incorporate some of those ideas, find some of the programs, even if we have to subsidize some of it, to save money for the tax rate of the city. And you know the kind of how to make this. The state creates the boon fund, so by the presentation tonight, with the Capiano probably, that the state is making progress economically. We start seeing a bottom of depression or recession, whether you want to follow. But we have to be very vision. It's very easy to say, okay, we're coming out of a recession and to protect your money, let's spend it. Any CPA, any account keeper with a financial background can tell you, save, bet, and that's what we should do. So the council, with a very, very foundation proof like you, expect us to be the same in the upcoming year. Thank you. Moving forward, Counsel Member Communications. Counselwoman Lee.
I just wanted to get an update as to the location of the dog park and if any locations were being considered seriously where we were there.
Thank you, Mr. President. The administration is going to ask that, seeing that the ordinance has been passed and obviously we will have a dog park in the city, we could just remove it from the agenda until April. Poxon Recreation have been having trouble trying to get up to different locations to take measurements because of the snow and, you know. So obviously the ordinance is passed, the council wants a dog park. We just need better weather, I guess you would say, to actually try to find a place. And to do that, there's a lot of research that has to go into it, measurements, you know, there's other things. And I'm passing this on from Poxon Recreation Director.
Okay, so I'm sure that there's some locations that are being considered. You're not liberated to.
I don't have those, no, Counsel. But there are, there are locations that are being considered. It's just that it's difficult to get to those locations to measure different things that they need and to see what is on the bottom of the snow.
I guess just a lot of people ask where they know it's coming. They just want to know where it's coming.
Well, obviously, when, you know, I mean, I think what we, what Poxon Rec has planned is to present maybe two or three different locations that may be acceptable. And then, you know, have the council deliberate on that.
Okay.
Right now.
And they will do that in April?
Pardon me?
In April.
Be asked in April. Only the update, you know, because the update is under Council Member Communications. So if we forego the March update and then in April, we should have some locations.
I guess my concern is that if they... I guess my concern is that if they, if they wait until April to decide on a location, doesn't leave very much time to do fundraising and gather, you know, to, is, okay.
In my opinion, I mean, fundraising could be done anytime. The ordinance is passed, we're going to have a dog park.
People want to know where it's going before they, they commit to it.
I can see that.
You know, they want to know if it's something they're going to be using.
I can see that.
Yeah, so it would be nice to have that.
I mean, feel free to keep it on the agenda and if, you know, if I have any other information for the March council meeting, I'd be more than happy to pass that on.
That would be great, yeah.
But if I don't, I just need you to understand that we're still in the process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Steil.
Yes, I have a question about whether contractors assign to plow Fifth Street. Fifth Street is a very short, a little, little street that three businesses are on. And last year it wasn't plowed and I ended up calling the mayor's office to get it plowed. This year it wasn't plowed, the businesses called me again. And then in the middle of the process of getting it plowed, the contractor went out and said to the businesses that they'd never been told to plow Fifth Street. So I'm just concerned that this, from here on in, it should be clear that Fifth Street is a C Street and that it needs to be plowed and such and such a contractor is assigned to plow it. And that's what I'm hoping will happen, I'd like a response from the administration about that.
Ken Mason, Director of Public Works. Mr. Steil, which section of Fifth Street are you talking about? There are three distinct sections, east of Elmwood Avenue, west of Elmwood Avenue, and then there's the third section, which actually you access it off Avery Street off of Wellington. I'm assuming you're talking about the one that's east of Elmwood Avenue on the Crest of Bull side?
I believe so. Is that where Josie's Auto Repair is?
That's at the corner of Elmwood and...
Right. That's where I believe the problem is.
Alright, yeah, we are aware of the problem. There is a contractor vendor that is assigned to that and a city dispatcher is aware of that, that that C Street needs to be plowed. It's kind of a difficult street, though. It's only about a twenty-foot wide street, probably about three hundred feet long, and there's no curbing whatsoever. And there's buildings on either side that are actually all parking lots, so it's kind of an oddball street, but they are fully aware of it.
Yeah, I know, it's tough, I mean, you think it was a driveway.
It, yes, it does look a lot like a driveway to a business, so we are aware of it. If it hasn't been plowed this year, we apologize, but I know it was plowed the day that you brought it up to administration, it was plowed by a city truck, actually.
Yes, oh, by a city truck, yes. Ah, okay. Alright, that answers that question. The second question has to do with something I brought up to the administration, well, I brought it up years ago and then I brought it up more than a month ago. There's a longstanding tradition of dumping at the end of Parkview Boulevard and now that's extended to Dresden Street. There's tires that are there now and I requested, and I believe there's probably a mattress there, too, that, that a barrier be put there. Because what's happening is that there are kids in the neighborhood with ATVs and they're going all over the place and so it's very inviting to someone with roofing shingles, tires, mattresses.
Again, the end of Parkview Boulevard actually turns into a paper street, that's what that is. And also the same thing with Dresden, it turns into a paper street and they both intersect at a ninety-degree angle. They used to be a National Grid electrical substation down there, which they have since removed, but there are still high voltage electric wires on those two paper streets, which requires National Grid to maintain access to those lines. I have reached out to Marissa Albanese, she's our National Grid liaison, to see if she would have their people actually install bolides with a chain so they could have access whenever they wanted it. And she has not gotten back to me. If, if we, if we have to, we could do it ourselves, but I would prefer to have them do it so they would have the lock and chain to open that up.
So that they can get access to...
Their high tension wires.
Okay, oh, well, a couple of things. That was tried many years ago when I brought this up. And they put two wooden stanchions and a wire, a fairly heavy-duty wire across, and people drove over the wire and snapped the wire. So let's not do wire again, if we can avoid that grid. I don't think they care. So that's one point. Second point is, they don't need, I don't think they need access from both directions. And there never was access from Dresden until they went, National Grid went through and trimmed around the wires. It's actually over, I think it's a wetland, it's certainly wet. And so they trimmed around the wires and made this big opening. And then the kids with the ATVs made what was a paper street into a real street. So what I would suggest is that Dresden be blocked off completely so that they, grid can't drive in there from Dresden. And that Parkview Boulevard, they put something that's really heavy-duty so it can't be broken to block. And that that barrier go, the other thing that's wrong with where they put the barrier is that they, they put it down, indented into the paper street instead of right on the edge. So what happened then was everybody dumped, well, some people dumped in front of the barrier. So I think the barrier needs to be right on, I believe it's Wainbridge, right by the railroad tracks there. And it needs to be strong because it's going to get attacked.
Okay, I'll reach out to National Grid and convey your concerns and I will talk to them directly about that. In the meantime, anytime we have any kind of trash or mattresses or couches or tires, we'll come and pick those up and try to keep that. We did, the week after I had talked with you last month, we did just that. We removed a couple of couches and some tires.
Okay, thank you very much.
So, you have a council, you have a council senator?
Thank you, Council President, I know I'm not in the docket, but I wanted to ask now, the snow's melted a little, how many trucks filling potholes? Do we know that tonight? Usually we have one, but I'm figuring with the number of potholes I've seen over the last couple of days.
We had three trucks out just today.
Good, okay.
Going over the city. Between the calls I've been giving and the calls they've been getting directly.
Alright, can I call one in now, Hazelton at Bell Jam?
I'll make a note.
Could stop losing people, they're going to go down, it's so big, so.
I'll make a note.
Thank you. Also, for the next Public Works Committee meeting, could I have an update on the Atwood Avenue traffic light and the flood wall on Fletcher Avenue? The flood wall on Fletcher Avenue requires some DEM waves, I want to know if they're all done. You can do that, you don't have to have that tonight. Public Works, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Council President, just two communications. One is reference to the Providence Journal dated February sixth, two fourteen. I was happy to see that CBS ceases to back the sales at seven thousand six hundred stores. If you remember, last year was my initiative, I did submit that legislation as a resolution to request that, and I'm glad that CBS saw my vision. Next, Council President, is an email I received from, I guess, a participant in the Cranston Bay Road League. And it's my concern, there's been some allegations against the president of the board, Robert Santos. So I would like a hearing before the ordinance committee, next to the ordinance committee, if we could get Tony Libitoria and Mr. Santos to answer some questions pertaining to the image that's been presented by some of the leading members of the Cranston Bay Road League. I think we need to address professionalism there. Thank you.
I just have a comment on that to the Councilman. We can do that, but just so you know, that the City of Cranston has nothing to do with the Cranston Bay Road.
We do appropriate money to that.
You may do it as a small grant or anything.
We do a grant, so they have some, we have some influence.
Okay, I will pass that on to the Council.
What money are appropriated from the city to the Bay Road League?
I, I don't see it either.
If anything, we get money from them when they pay us for field time.
That's, 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 the only tie that we have with them is they use our fields. I don't know that we fund them, you might want to ask the finance director.
Will you have any grants going? Well, can we, we have an indirect relationship because they use our fields, correct?
That, that is it. I mean, we have nothing to do with the board of directors, they have no say on our Poxon Recreation Advisory Committee.
Are we, are we held liable for any...
Not at all.
Assaults and batteries that take place on our fields? Something that...
Probably have to ask one of the solicitors for that, I, I wouldn't think.
What is our assumption of risk if something transpires on one of our fields?
Familiar, forgive me, Councilman, I'm a little behind of the way and I'm not sure what was in the paper to tie this all in.
Did you email to the council pertaining to allegations of unprofessionalism and board president and a member of the Bay Road League?
What's that, a fight or something?
Words and qualification, yes.
Oh, I see.
Thank you, shoot, for a second. I get the same email, the indication that place in the City of York, was it not you as well, was it the City of York?
Council President? Council President, they came before us a couple of months ago, I don't know if this, they came before us as a full council. There was a feud between, over the fields.
Different group.
And I remember we told them that...
Different group, different group.
Different group? But it's still a little league and we told them they have to, it shouldn't have been before us, it should go to Mr. Libitoria as Director of Poxon Recreation. The same kind of scenario happened a couple of months ago.
Does the City, Council, really want to get involved in these petty squabbles, these organizations? Bring the white skeleton, bring the gray skeleton, this is kind of ridiculous, I think. You know, I, we have more important things to be doing than this cigarette spats. Councilman Freeman.
As an employee of CBS Camark and a member of the cigarette task force, I thank Councilman Arketoff for his well-wishes and I will bring them to the cigarette task force at our next meeting. Thank you, Councilman.
Yes, just a follow-up to the administration, Mr. Mason, what's the process for potholes on state roads? Is somebody communicating them to the state or they go for you or is there a number to call? We contact our IDOT directly when we see or when we get calls on state roads. Okay, so what should we do? Should we call the administration and then they'll call you and then they'll call the state? That's correct.
Councilman Beckley.
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair, Mr. Mason, another question before you sit down. With regard to the potholes, have you heard of the, some device or something that was discussed on the radio, one of the talk shows, about repairing the potholes, about some vibrating machine that gets rid of the disposers of the water or expenses of the water?
We need cattle.
Well, then they were willing to give them for free, it's common, it's not a company that makes them and relieves them, they're just ordering them. They in fact mentioned while on the air, they bashed the city because they said one of our people were repairing a pothole and they were just, three gentlemen and one was putting the material in the hole and the other two were watching, but they were also saying they needed to tamp it down, they didn't have the equipment to compact it so that the water wouldn't get underneath again.
Well, we don't, we don't currently have any kind of device like that. We do use a high-performance mix, a cold patch mix, which is supposed to be a lot better and a lot longer lasting than the standard cold patch that we've been purchasing in the past. Jury's still out on it and it does perform a little bit better, but it's pretty pricey, too.
I think this was fifteen hundred dollars, this machine, and they were actually willing to give it to the cities. It was on either the Dan York Show or one of the daytime show, York Shows, but there was a gentleman who manufactured it in the Rhythms, but I mentioned that. And one of, one other question, if I make, with my, I got to my one-way signs on pothole. I know the weather's been horrendous, but I know my constituents asked me if it was, if the signs had been constructed and when they may be going in.
As soon as the weather breaks, we'll get them up, probably within a month. Thank you.
Councilman Steil.
I'd just like to request that at the next Public Works Committee meeting, get a report on the tree planting program. Thank you.
Is there any home business? Introduction to Looping, this is where please bring your readers. Introduction to the business, please, where please, we need to read this. For the finance committee, March thirteenth. Order two fourteen, hold on. Amendment of seventeen of the public city president, title of fire department president, and district, refer to the ordinance committee, eight seventeen. Amendment of twenty, one eighty, seventeen, sixteen. Proud David, Chairman of the, James T. Porter, eleven, seventeen, eighteen.